Everybody. Our first order of business today is the uh. Everybody should have there was a public notice for annual budget hearing. At the Jasper City Hall chamber, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Chris Lanier, could you lead us in prayer, please?
Your Lord, look upon this community and help to guide our decisions and the individuals that are here. With responsibility to serve the citizens of Jasper. And also for our law enforcement, first responders, and EMS for the service they provide to this community. Us as all going forward, make decisions with your name, your name and brand.
Amen.
Amen.
Okay, first order of business we have is a public hearing. You have questions or comments regarding the city of Jasper fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four? We have any questions from the council or any questions from uh or any comments from our department heads? On the budget? Okay, uh can we get a motion to approve the budget, please?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilman Schultz. All in, uh any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, it's like I'll be at all that's okay. Alright, uh thank you very much Denise, we have a budget. Okay, uh right now, we're gonna go right on into our city council meeting. Uh we've already had our prayer. First thing on our council meeting is a proclamation. Honoring firefighters, law enforcement, EMS staff, and volunteers. Whereas Congress and the President of the United States have assigned designated certain dates of every year to honor and recognize those who have made sacrifices to safeguard our citizens and our way of life. And whereas too many firefighters, law enforcement officers, emergency medical service, and volunteer personnel work hard while protecting the public in catastrophic events such as the wildfires we have been experiencing. And whereas the volunteer firefighters of the city of Jasper and Jasper County are true volunteers and put their lives on the line every time they answer the call for no pay. And whereas firefighters and emergency service personnel play an essential role in the protection of lives and property in our local community. And whereas it is of major importance that we increase our efforts to promote volunteerism in our community. And whereas the city of Jasper recognizes and appreciates those noble individuals and acknowledge that others like them will continue to unselfishly make sacrifices and to safeguard that which we hold dear. Now therefore, I Anderson M. Land, Mayor of City of Jasper, Texas, on behalf of the city of Jasper and the city council hereby call upon all citizens to recognize all of our firefighters, law enforcement, law enforcement, emergency medical services, and volunteer personnel who have made the ultimate sacrifice, their lives in their lives, and in service to protect that which we hold dear. And be it further resolved that we thank all firefighters, law enforcement, emergency medical service, and volunteer personnel who continue to make the city of Jasper and the county of Jasper a safe place to live, play, work, and do business. I'm gonna ask all the firefighters and EMS personnel that we have here to please come up front and accept this. Rather than others, where could you come up and accept before the city of Jasper? Thank you very much for your service. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. Yeah. Thank you, John.
We got root pigeons coming down.
Thank you for your service.
Mr. Mayor.
You want to root pigeon?
Definitely.
You sure? Alright, everybody straight up. Take a couple of them, alright? John, real? One more, please. Thank you. Alright, thank you. Okay, next thing we have is uh information from council members. Departmental reports, we have any departmental reports? Chief?
On the whole, trapping. Couple of weeks ago, they put their trap out. Last few, seen that, they called eighteen. Friday night, they called thirteen, Saturday night, they called fifteen. We have forty-six up until.
Okay. Good, sounds good. Okay, do we have any other departmental reports? Any questions on, for any of the department heads? No, okay. Thank you. Public comments, we have any public comments? Anybody sign up for public comments? Okay, alright. Items for discussion and our action. Item one, consider for approval, two sets of minutes, regular call city council meeting, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and special call meetings. City council meeting, August twenty-first. Did everybody read the meetings? Did it have any corrections or anything on it?
I make a motion, make a second.
Okay, motion for?
A second for.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Schultz and a second by Councilman Sample. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion passed. Item two, consider for approval, appointment of Mayor Solander as our NPA Board of Directors.
I make a motion to appoint David Schultz to the S R NPA Board.
Already.
I was talking.
Schultz is already. Councilman Sample was already seated. Councilman Schultz is already.
Can you raise your hand?
I make a motion to uh to appoint David Schultz to the S R NPA Board of Directors.
Councilman Sample already made a motion, but we're talking at the same time, so you couldn't hear me.
I didn't say anything.
No, no, I'm sorry, not Councilman Schultz, I mean Councilman Sample making a motion at the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I made a motion to uh appoint.
I made a motion for you then.
How?
I spoke, that's how.
Wait, you haven't hit me?
We have a motion, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I said.
We have a motion and a second, a discussion. We have a vote, all in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, all opposed, say no?
No.
So I asked, well, we have three, four, and one against.
Hold on, who was the three that voted?
And you say aye?
No.
Oh, okay. Somebody said, did some, did somebody, did we have?
Restate the vote, I didn't hear.
Yeah, bring it back.
It was, it was three and one and.
Who was the three?
Right down here. Marcus, Vlado, DeMarcus.
DeMarcus, he didn't vote?
Oh, so you're not voting?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't vote, so.
No, I'm just asking, so you're not voting? Okay.
So you had two, four, and three against, and then?
Three against. Okay, motion fails. Alright, next item on the agenda, list of capital requests fiscal for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four to be paid out of Cambridge funds.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any questions about the request for the capital request? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Did everybody go?
Yeah.
Did everybody go?
Any opposed?
Did everybody?
Miss Karen?
We all voted aye, okay, so it's five. Was aye, any, any opposed?
I didn't hear anyone oppose.
Okay, alright.
If they did, please.
Yeah, can we uh?
Excuse, excuse, excuse.
Can we raise our hands?
Please just don't speak out of turn.
Can we raise our hands? Can we raise our hand to vote so it doesn't confuse Karen?
So we've already voted, okay, that motion passes. Okay, next item on the agenda. You're not being recognized on the floor.
I call for a question.
You're not being recognized, so please stop.
Can we raise our hand?
And your?
You raised your hand.
Yeah, push on the phone, can we raise our hand?
You're not being recognized.
You can speak and raise your hand.
Well, I'm just saying, can we, yeah, I'm just saying, can we raise our hand for more clarification for you so you know exactly what's being said and not someone telling you who's voting? Can we raise our hand?
Yes, like I said, you're welcome to do both.
Alright, no problem.
But if I can see.
Post it.
Next item on the agenda, number four, consider for approval, annual budget ordinances. Ordinance number nine dash zero five dash twenty-three A, twenty twenty-three tax rate adoption. Ordinance number nine zero five dash twenty-three B, setting and establishing the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year operating budget. Ordinance number nine zero five dash twenty-three C, applying allocated adjustment contingency reserves and providing for amended budgets for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year per the fiscal projections in the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget and fiscal plan. Ordinance number nine dash zero five dash twenty-three D, tax roll appraisal and tax levy. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve number four.
Okay, we have. We have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Councilman Sample. All, uh, we have any more discussion on that? Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, we have all. We have five yes, none opposed. Okay, motion passes. Item number five, consider for approval.
Were you not going to put the Jetco budget?
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry about that, Eddie. Eddie here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, Eddie Hopkins. Item number eight. Okay, item number eight, consider for approval, the Jetco twenty twenty-three fiscal year operating budget. Eddie, come up, please. Thank you, Denise.
You have the budget in front of you, actually, this year's budget is pretty much ditto from last year, except for the fact that we have a lesser uh loss at the end of the year if we spend every penny of our budget, which has not been the case since Jetco's been created. But uh it's unfortunate when you show a large net income in my business because that means you probably haven't expended some of the funds in uh direct business incentives that you wanted to. But this year, uh, we are, we've had a great year with revenue, as the city has, from sales tax. And we're anticipating that, even though we're budgeting conservatively with revenue, we still believe that we're gonna have another good year in sales tax. Our revenue for the year is a million, two forty-two five. And we show expenses, as again, if we spend all of our resources on business, direct business incentives, at a million, three oh five nine, which would be a deficit budget of sixty-three five. Last year, we had a deficit budget of three hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred dollars. And the biggest item you'll see is that we, uh, and we're very happy to, we participated with the city on the South Main Street project. And uh we budgeted and did spend last year, four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And to done that, I think our part was a little over two million dollars. It's what Jetco contributed to do South Main Street. We paid our, or got our last invoice, and that will be paid this month. So we will have expended all the resources towards South Main Street from Jetco. But be happy to answer any questions. I did go in and uh along with the auditor, some recommendations. We, I felt the need to better recognize where some of the expenses are being spent, expended. So we've created a couple of line items that will better identify expenditures. I just think that's more transparent and better. One of them is tourism marketing. And if you pass on Wheeler Street today, you'll see a piece of that that we're spending in this year's fiscal year. But we put a new sign up today with regards to the Butterfly Festival. And I, I think it's a very good sign, it's, it's almost, it is a billboard. But that's what we're gonna focus on in, in regards to tourism marketing. We believe that we have a very wonderful area for tourism, and part of what we can spend for a money on is that, so we want to do a better job of that this coming year. So I've created a line item for that. Any questions? I've got a saying I wanna share that I, I got from a meeting the other day in the governor's office. People want growth, but people don't want change.
That's right.
And boy, I tell you, in my business, that is so true. They want growth, but we don't want change.
Thank you, Eddie. Alright, any uh? No questions from council, okay? We have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilman Schultz?
Yes, sir.
Make your motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear.
Just two people talking.
Jetco's budget, I make a motion to approve, present it.
Can we get a second?
Yes.
We have a second by Councilman Sample. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion passed, no, no. Next on the agenda, consider request approval for request to allocate funds to purchase Gatorade water, et cetera, to the uh forest service and local fire. Oh, number five, consider approval of resolution three, three zero zero six, city of Jasper, I'm sorry, tax rate.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve that.
Motion made by Councilman Schultz, second by Councilman Sample, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion passed, five, no, five to no. I'm sorry, thank you. Item number six, now, considerable approval request to allocate funds to purchase Gatorade, water, et cetera, to the forest service and local fire departments. During this time, I think it would be appropriate for us to do that, Denise?
Yes, sir, I think that if that will allow us to automatic approval from y'all, is as the market's need is that we can provide these.
I know, I know some of those guys feed off each other every once in a while when they're assisting. And in lieu of that, uh, I'd like to make a recommendation since sometimes it gets in the fire district, sometimes the fire district comes back from the city. Like to allocate funds, ten thousand dollars set aside for those. I know your person might have access to it.
Well, I talked to the city manager today, do you think that's?
It's whatever you as council, it's not gonna be spent until, like I said, until it's requested. We'll keep that between our local departments as far as what they get.
I've got a motion for ten thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
Yeah, but I think ten, you think ten thousand dollars is not an overkill, woman?
I don't think it is. Got a motion and a second.
Yes, okay, we got a motion and a second, all, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
Four ayes, one no, motion passed.
Did you hear that?
Consider for approval, Councilman Sample.
He got.
We have four ayes and one no. And one no? Yes. Okay, consider for approval, appeal. Consider for approval, appeal and application for Woody Lane property, location one fifty-six West Houston Street and one thirty-eight West Houston Street. Jacqueline Cooper building damage is caused by construction. It's the city. Jeremy, is Jeremy here?
Jeremy here.
Jeremy, could you uh let the council know about that, please?
Which part?
What, what do we, you got two buildings? What is this, what is this request for? What's the application for?
This is their appeal to the code enforcement that they're responsible for.
Could you, could you come up, please?
Can't hear you.
So we'll all understand what, what they actually asking us. Thank you.
The appeal is for the code enforcement letter that both uh Mr. Lane and Ms. Cooper received for the shared wall where the building used to be, where it's torn down. Each one of those buildings that they own had a shared wall. That wall is now in danger of collapse, potentially hurting the occupants or the public of that building. So under the code enforcement of a dangerous structure or portion thereof, they were ordered to have that fixed or repaired. They are appealing that decision based upon the fact that they do not want to be responsible for paying for that or having that done since the building that was once there was torn down previously.
Who tore it down, I'm sorry?
The city did.
The city tore it down, exposed the substandard wall, it was a division that's now standing.
It, it, it wasn't, mine, I wasn't up here at the time, so I can't say what the state of that wall was prior to.
You said it was substandard now.
It is substandard now, yes.
We tore it.
I'm asking.
Excuse me, guys, you can't just talk at one time.
Nobody was talking. I, I was asking this, is Ms. Cooper here? Is anyone here from there?
Ms. Cooper?
Can I, can you, can you hear me well?
Yeah. But when I was doing the appeal, I was, they was wanting me to pay.
Excuse me, sir, could you uh come up, please?
Yes, come up. Over here?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Excuse me, please. Please, gentlemen, speak.
Go ahead, sir.
Alright, um, what it was, they were wanting me to repair something that I didn't have nothing to do with. And whoever tore the building down, um, didn't know what they was doing because they knocked a hole in my building, um, knocked the front part loose, and then knocked all the bricks down inside on the building. And um, um, God was wanting me to fix something that I didn't do. And so, um, I can't fix, um, something that I didn't care of. And so, um, I wanted to do an appeal.
Do you, do you have any idea, I mean, is that a repairable wall, or is it need to be torn down? I didn't understand what.
Now, the wall is still solid.
The, the actual appeal, and I do apologize for Mr. Lane and Ms. Cooper, I'm trying to presume what the exact nature of their appeal was because it was turned into the city attorney.
Sure.
First, what we had found, and in meeting with both of them, we presented them as all people that get served a code enforcement violation, everyone has the right to vote, to appeal based on whatever they feel that that appeal applies to.
Okay.
And Mr. Lane and Ms. Cooper, as he stated, they don't feel like they're responsible for that.
I'm not responsible, I don't feel like I'm not, because I have nothing to do with it.
Alright, so.
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and prove good people.
Could we hear from? Ms. Cooper? I'd like to hear from the city attorney before we do any, any more, okay? Thank you.
Okay, my wall at the front of the building is leaning out, it was torn down. The top part of it is leaning out, it's broken loose like from the building. Now I had some work done on the building last year, I had it repaired just off the leaks. I had some other things done, but after that wall was hit by whoever tore the building down between the two of us, then the front glass of the building has cracked, and I thought somebody was trying to break in. I had called the police, but they told me it wasn't that. Uh, the, the glass is cracked in the front, I can see, I got a closet in that corner, I can see straight out to the sky in that corner where the wall is knocked out. And uh now my roof is leaking a bit. So I don't think I'm responsible for it since I didn't turn the building down. And I think the wall was damaged from whoever tore that building down between the two of us. And I'm not sure, but I thought by them being adjoining builders, I wasn't sure if there was a beam going through the building to hold that stable for all joining buildings.
Ms. Cooper? Thank you very much. Can we hear from the fire marshal, please? Can we hear from the fire marshal, please?
Ms. Cooper, I have a question. When, when did they turn the wall down, do you know when they did it?
I don't know exactly, but the city know.
Excuse me, I, I, for the fire marshal, could you come up, please?
Mayor, council, uh, I think the building was tore down sometime, it's either October or November of twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty.
Okay. And what is your assessment?
Uh, well, we went over there, or I met Mr. Kelly, Ms. Denise. Up there one evening to determine what property was ours. And it was determined that one that was at, located at one thirty-eight West Houston Street. At that time, we reckon, we saw high grass and weeds, so we abated those, the city did, I think the street phone done that. Uh, while we was there, we saw multiple violations where the tenants on both sides had ran their conditite line out of the walls, dumped it on the city property. And there were several violations on the rear of the property behind uh Ms. Cooper's. She has since then taken care of those violations. There is a hole knocked in the, what was at one time a firewall, wasn't constructed right back then. Uh, I have got with Mr. Kelly and the city is gonna repair that.
So. Mr. Lane? Yeah. What are you asking for, and you and the other tenant, what are you asking for the city to do?
I just need them to repair all those broken bricks that it broke. They knocked a hole in the side of my wall, they knocked the front of the wall loose. And um that, down the whole side, they busted all of that side up. And then on that one side where it was working, it started leaking on that side right there, too. And I need them to um, um, at least get that repaired.
Is that reasonable for us to do? Is it, um, uh, city attorney?
Well, I think uh when, when we, I think one of those pieces were donated to us, is that by?
So one thirty-eight was?
Yeah, one thirty-eight was donated to us by the Barbara family.
Okay. And the city is responsible for everything up until the bricks start. And then the bricks were added later. And so the city was not responsible for any of the bricks above a certain level. And uh so if the bricks are coming down, it wasn't anything that we did or constructed or owned. And so my opinion is, you know, I mean, we go in there and remove the bricks, we can, but it's not our responsibility, that's my opinion.
Is that a focus in your ministry?
It's not, it's not a fire roll up there, is, is there, Chris, is that next to your building?
Yes.
Okay, could you, do you have any comments that you wanna say on that?
We have the property on the corner of uh West Houston and Bowie at one five eight. And just the way the construction went back in that day, I share a common adding myself and Mr. Lane. So there's concern on us, on, you know, being adjacent to that, right, about the, the facades of those buildings falling forward. My observation, I'm not an engineer, was that obviously when the previous structure was there, even though the city may not have constructed it, um, having all those facades joined together, whether there was a beam there or not, you know, basically was a brace, it's almost like if you went through and chopped up a middle brace in the middle of the street, what's gonna happen on the adjacent sides of those braces? And that's where it appears those facades are starting to leak forward.
So let me ask this question, but the uh city fire marshal and our code, our code, uh, city building inspector, does, we're moving that building and the two buildings that are there on either side, the, the two uh uh wings, is that to applicants, are they uh, does that at all interfere with the structural integrity of their building?
We're not engineers, what we can say is that on the brick, what we see, we apply the code. Code says that if this wall is in danger of falling, collapse, breaking, damaging any further structures or any personal life or any occupant or public, we have to address it as under code enforcement. To determine whether or not that building is, is structurally sound, it's not on us. We can't do it legally because we are the code enforcement, fire marshal, and building inspector. We can't go in and determine that. We can determine the violation, we can determine that the, the, the safety hazard exists, but that's it. But of course, assess the timeline for abatement and all that. But as far as going in and saying, is it structurally sound, did we cause this? Do we feel like this is our fault or, or not? We, we don't have any role in that.
Okay. So what steps do you need, you think we need to take in order to make those buildings, make their buildings safe, make our, well, because we own, we own a piece in the middle, there's nothing there for us, right?
Again, legally, we cannot provide that information.
I got you, okay.
Let me ask a question.
Sure, go ahead, Dave.
The, the case date on this was the end of May of this year. Apparently, the structure was torn down approximately three years ago, I guess, it sounded like, prior to that. I haven't been around those buildings, I haven't looked at them. You're saying you, you can't negate to the structure of that, or the status of that structure, you aren't ever torn down either, and I wasn't over there either, so I'm just as blank as you. The uh, but when this was issued out in twenty-three, I guess, to say it was unsafe, it wasn't just because of the structure, it was also because of the penetration of conditite lines. There's some other things that were noticed.
Yes, sir, there were other violations, and, and just to be clear, neither one of the, and either one of the applicants are saying that the. are saying that those violations weren't there and they had corrected.
They took, they took care of everything that y'all mentioned with the exception of this so far. So they, in good faith, they did what they thought they were responsible for. I really hate to admit, but I haven't been by this, I didn't get a chance, as I think that my paperwork did today. I would prefer myself to get a chance to go by and look at it with the property owner before I make a decision on it, and I would prefer that that decision not be put off a month for them. If it's at the mayor's discretion, I'd like to make a recommendation to table, maybe for a couple of weeks, till we get a chance to get with the property owners and look at it.
And you want to?
That's okay with y'all, I'd like to see what y'all got on that.
I'll, I'll, but you can go see now and see how bad the, um, sitting there.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table to reset for either the next regular meeting or a call meeting prior to that. So, well, gives us two options.
Alright, we have a motion to table. All in favor? We've had discussions, are all in favor? No, I just, I got this. No, no, I'm sorry, we had a motion by Councilman Schultz, can I get a second?
I did.
Okay, now we have a second by Councilman Sample, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, so, motion pass unanimously. We will look into that, uh, certainly, we'll talk to you afterwards, so Councilman Schultz will get with you, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is considered for approval, recommendation to approve C four land management as the second contractor for providing special home demolition service for the CDDG dash DR, project number twenty dash zero six six dash zero three one, dash C two twenty-five. Same one is?
That is not me.
It's not you?
That is you.
That is, that is.
That's the one, okay.
That's the one that you and Greg and I.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I don't, I didn't know where, so, yeah.
This is what, we were, we approved one last meeting, y'all approved one for demolition. Well, GLO, the grant manager come back and asked if we approved the second one, and there was nothing wrong with them. We just always in the past, it just approved one, where they thought maybe because they asked for more just for bidding purposes.
GLO asked for that. Okay, and it's on a separate structure?
Well, it's, um, they haven't, it, all the.
It's on the combined demolition.
It's on the combined.
I make a motion to approve. I got it. If we only, only for the one, I said we needed more.
I'll stick with it. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Schultz and a second by Councilman Holmes. Have any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have five ayes. Thank you very much, motion, motion adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.